Okay, good morning, everybody. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could we do the roll call?
Yes. Supervisor Pine is currently, I think he's walking in. Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
Yes, I'm here.
Supervisor Horsley?
Here.
Supervisor Tisia?
Here.
President Slocum?
I'm here. Thank you.
Now, we'll move to a public comment. I have a couple of public comment cards. And we can start with Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, my fellow veteran, Mr. Malpey, and county council, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county, and thank you for responding to the petition that was filed with the clerk of the board on June 13th, 2011. Yes, that's right, almost five years ago. The petition presented to the board in 2011 sought rescission of the county's agreement with the San Mateo County Bar Association for the Private Defender Program services for fiscal year 2011-12 that the board had approved when it voted for the consent agenda item number 20 during its meeting on June 7th, 2011. The Private Defender Program attorneys were observed as lacking the skills needed to communicate effectively with mentally ill misdemeanor defendants, including those suffering from anosognosia. And I was told that private defenders were not given any training that might help them acquire those skills. The contract itself provided no recidivism reduction incentives to the bar association, and the contract was being administered in a way that actually encouraged recidivism. The incredibly lame response to the petition presented a false dichotomy, which claimed that the contract had to be approved because the program would cease on July 1st if it wasn't. The petition pointed to documentary proof that the former pretrial diversion program for mentally ill misdemeanors was abolished without either public notice or public participation. Since then, it has become apparent that it is rare to see corrective action being taken to address programs that morph over time into dysfunction and worse, without having a lawsuit filed against the county or an adverse civil grand jury report. Therefore, please accept my thanks for responding to my petition of 2011. Thank you.
Mr. Bob Gordon?
Good morning, supervisors and members of the public. My name is Bob Gordon. I'm head of a subcommittee of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. We call ourselves the Farm Team. We're working to eliminate the sales of tobacco in pharmacies. Now, we work closely with Youth Leadership Institute, Breathe California, pharmacists, local pharmacists, the North County Prevention Partnership, doctors, dentists, dental hygienists, and schools of pharmacy. Our Tobacco Education Coalition respectfully asks you to consider a future policy that would make it so tobacco retailer licenses are no longer granted to pharmacies. You may not know, but eight other California communities have already done so, starting with San Francisco in 2008, and most recently, Daly City. In Daly City, the four drugstores that were selling tobacco saw their tobacco retailer licenses expire. Now, why work on such a policy in the county? We know that our young people frequent local drugstores, and when they arrive at a front counter of a drugstore with their purchases, they often see a huge wall of tobacco products and all the Marlboro and Camel advertising associated with it. Community members and their elected officials do have the power to decide that local pharmacies will not sell tobacco, and therefore, the power to change what a pharmacy and a drugstore is for a whole new generation of kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards. So we'll move to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items. Maybe before we do that, I do have a, actually, I do have another speaker card from Marlene Finley, who wants to speak on item 32. Is that right?
Yes. Good morning, supervisors, county manager Malpey, and council byers, and members of the public. I want to bring to your attention one of the items on the consent agenda, which is the donation of $8,000 from the Friends of Fitzgerald Marine Reserve to pay for additional park staff at Fitzgerald Marine Reserve in order to protect these sensitive resources during low tides and during the harbor seal pupping season, which is right now. The Friends of Fitzgerald Marine Reserve have been dedicated supporters and protectors of the reserve resources for over 40 years. They train docents, they lead school groups, they even provide funding to bus children from schools that don't have a chance to go on field trips and learn about the coast. In addition, they're also active in the Marine Protected Area Collaborative, and they also provide education on marine resources through social media and their newsletter. They're making a difference in protecting the resource, and they walk the talk. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, motion to set the agenda.
I actually want to take one—
Sorry.
I'd like to ask, take 17 off. I'd like to make a couple of comments about that.
And I'd like to take 37 off.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Now, we'll move on to item number one, which is a presentation of a proclamation designating April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Supervisor Pine?
Thank you, President Slocum. Each April, we do designate the month as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's recognized throughout the United States. Unfortunately, child abuse and malt treatment is considered one of our very serious public health problems, and studies document the link between abuse and neglected children with a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. Child abuse often occurs when people find themselves in very stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. In this county, through our Child Collaborative Action Team, we try to bring all the stakeholders together to reduce child abuse and to, again, bring the parties together to work collectively. So today, I'd like to make a resolution to mark April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I believe Delina Smith and Melissa Martin may be here to receive the proclamation.
I'll second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me just come up and give you this.
On behalf of the CCAT team, I want to thank San Mateo County for the efforts and the monies that are put into child abuse prevention. I am a director at IHSD, the Institute for Human and Social Development, a grantee of CCAT. We serve Head Start in San Mateo County, 805 children and families. With this monies, we have put a lot of effort into the coast on reducing child abuse and doing so through prevention and awareness. This grant has funded a lot of parenting courses, a positive parenting series on the coast, stress relief courses, in the home therapy for families who need it, and also father cafes, which are father groups that the dads get together and talk about their struggles as parents and really strengthen their network. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of San Mateo County and IHSD.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Pine, for bringing that forward. Item number two is a presentation by the San Mateo County Resource Conservation District. Supervisor Horsley will kick this off, I think.
Thank you, President Slocum. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Kellex Nelson, who's the executive director of the Resource Conservation District, to come back and give us a presentation on the updating the work of the Resource Conservation District. As you all know, she does work on, well, RCD, that isn't, but Kellex leads, actually does work on for private landowners, nonprofits, government agencies. And recently, I went out to Memorial Park with her to see some projects that they recently completed, Memorial Park, that really is, it's a sustainability project in the creek that runs something like 60 miles of potential habitat for steelhead, as well as coho salmon. So she's been, and her organization, they've been excellent partners with the county in a variety of projects, which I'm sure she's going to share. And I don't know if you're going to show that same presentation you had at Sustainable San Mateo County, but Kellex was, and RCD was recognized as Sustainable San Mateo County for the important work that they do, and the work that most, many of our landowners, as well as the county, couldn't do without them. So glad that you're here, Kellex.
Thank you. Thanks so much for having us, and us as me right now. Thank you for having me and for inviting the RCD to update you on what we're working on. I think we'll start with the video that was provided to us by Sustainable San Mateo County when we received the Sustainability Award this year. We're really grateful for this video. It helps elevate our visibility to folks like you and others. So why don't we go ahead and watch that, and then I'll make my presentation.
The Resource Conservation District is a public agency that exists for the purpose of helping people manage the land. And we work in primarily western half of San Mateo County. We help any kind of partner best manage their natural resources, whether it's water, wildlife, climate change, agriculture. We're there to help. We work with farmers and ranchers, people who live in subdivisions, the county and cities, with advocacy groups. We work with anybody who wants to do voluntary conservation to best manage natural resources if they want to do it. We're there to help. The history of the RCD is really fascinating. We were in outgrowth, really, of the Dust Bowl crisis, when the federal government realized that there was a need to manage soil as a national resource. In the 1930s, we were concerned with some flooding in the town of Colma and soil theft on the coast used to make backyards in San Francisco. And now, we're working with people on things having to do with endangered species, removing greenhouse gases from the atmosphere, and monitoring water quality.
The RCD has been a great partner in all of the stream restoration projects we've been doing.
The RCD brings people together over their common concerns for healing the damage we've done in the past.
The Resource Conservation District helps San Mateo County, and it specifically helps landowners take care of the land. It's an amazing organization, and I appreciate working with them.
Our projects range from this large-scale research project to determine the sources of bacterial contamination in Pillar Point Harbor, to very small projects on a landowner's backyard to help them manage stormwater and minimize erosion.
So another maintenance thing that we'll want to talk about is making sure these are clean before the beginning of the rainy season.
Mm-hmm. We could not accomplish what we do without our partners, whether they're the landowners, the resource agencies, the advocates, the technical advisors. We're providing assistance, but couldn't do it without the help of many others.
The RCD is very thoughtful in how they work with homeowners and careful to make sure that we're included in every step of the process.
In San Mateo County, our strongest and most functional partnership is with San Mateo RCD. And through that partnership, we're able to get a lot more conservation on the ground. Our mission is their mission, and vice versa.
Depending on who you ask, either everybody knows the RCD and their father and grandfather worked with us, or were the best kept secret, and they're amazed to find out that we were right under their nose this whole time.
The RCD is a great facilitator.
RCD is terrific.
So the RCD helps San Mateo County parks with the enadrumous fish that is steelhead and coho salmon habitat project in Memorial Creek Campground along Pescadero Creek. The RCD is an awesome partner.
When we're doing these small projects, property by property, with individual by individual, we're pretty excited about the impact that that can have. The fact is, in this coastal community, we're all part of the solution.
Thank you. So those folks you saw at the end are the ones that actually do the work. I talk about it. But that was a quick shot at the end of our very talented, very capable staff. So thank you for letting us show that video, and then I'll go straight into PowerPoint. I'm not going to spend really much time talking about what the RCD is right now, because I think that there's probably some understanding of that in this room. But just a reminder that a defining characteristic of RCDs across the state and the country, actually, is that we provide non-regulatory, free, technical assistance to people. So we help people manage the land, whether it's public, private, government, you name it, we help. So, let's see if this, where do I point this? What am I pointing it at? Oh, okay, thank you. Thanks very much. So mostly what I want to focus on today is give you an update on really where our focus areas are. In San Mateo County, these are the four priorities: water, climate, wildlife, and agriculture. And I'm going to just touch on each of these briefly. Water, of course, is one of the most significant forces shaping the future of California, and San Mateo County is no exception, particularly on the coast where there's no snowpack or enterties with any state water project. So we're working to ensure clean and reliable water in San Mateo County for fish, farms, and people. One of the areas where we partner extensively with the county has to do with water quality. You'll see in the two pictures on the left are signs where beaches are posted as closed because they have bacterial contamination. On the right is a member of our staff doing some water quality monitoring. We work with the county and several other partners to determine where there's pollution, why, and how much. But of course, it's not enough to stop at identifying the problem. We want to take steps to remediate it. So this photo is actually another partnership project we did with the county. When the county received Proposition 84 funds to protect the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve area of special biological significance, the county worked on county-related areas and asked subcontracted to us to work with private landowners on best management practices to address stormwater throughout the watersheds that drain into the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. The idea was to clean up pollution at its source before it gets to the Marine Reserve or the beaches. In addition to protecting water quality, a tremendous effort of ours right now has to do with drought and limited water resources. There are, remember again, that much of the coast is not served by a water utility or a water district or anything like that, and endangered fish, farms, and thousands of people depend upon the same limited water resources. So we work with domestic and agricultural uses of water to try to implement as much water conservation as possible so that it can be, and also give them the kind of water storage, so that water can be taken from creeks when it's more abundant, typically in winter, and stored, and then used from storage facilities during the drier months so that there's less impact on the shared limited resources. So our efforts with water on the coast range from water use efficiency. I like to include these pictures, particularly the one on the right, because I think most people, if you're driving down the coast, you see this beautiful landscape and have no idea quite how intentionally managed it is, and the network of infrastructure that's a few inches below the ground. These are very intentional managed landscapes. And so our efforts range from improving water use efficiency, water conservation, oops, to harvesting rainwater from rooftops, and recycling and reusing water wherever possible. The next priority program area for us is climate, where we work to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, remove carbon from the atmosphere, and prepare the community and wildlife for resilience to extreme weather. There are a number of opportunities to reduce the use of fossil fuels with wind power and solar power that we install with landowners. Oops. But also, I think, a particularly interesting area of work is, has to do with removing greenhouse gases from the atmosphere. The state of California cannot meet its ambitious greenhouse reduction goals without seeking solutions in agriculture. And San Mateo County provides a lot of opportunity for innovation in that area. Farms and ranches have opportunities to reduce emissions as well as adapt to a changing climate. And so we help these farmers and ranchers adopt practices that can actually offer a variety of environmental and health co-benefits through the reduction of greenhouse gases from the atmosphere, or sequestering carbon out of the atmosphere into the soil and vegetation. And then the third element of our climate program has to do with preparing communities and wildlife for extreme weather events. Of course, what we see with climate change is sometimes there's not enough water, and sometimes there's too much water, or sometimes it's in the wrong place, or sometimes it's at the wrong time, in all aspects of variability for our human and environmental communities. So this photo is of the flooding, the regularly occurring flooding on Pescadero Road into Pescadero. And as I think you know, we have been partnering with the county for a number of years now to try to find integrated solutions for long-term solutions to flooding that benefit the community, public safety, as well as all of the endangered species in the ecosystem down there. And a great deal of the funding for this and the capacity building in the community to look at innovative solutions has come through the county. The third program area is wildlife. With over 40 species of plants and animals at risk of becoming extinct in San Mateo County, we have our work cut out for us. So we have a number of projects that directly benefit coho salmon, steelhead trout, California red-legged frogs, San Francisco garter snakes, marbled merlets, pollinators, marine life in the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, and many, many more. We typically try to find in our projects the win-win. Where is there something that's beneficial for the economy, beneficial for agriculture, beneficial for wildlife? Often, where you find the biggest bang for the buck on the coast with that is with ponds. Ponds that provide water storage and critical water supply reliability for farms, also for domestic uses, also for fire suppression, can also serve as essential habitat for aquatic species that are threatened and endangered. In recent years, we have removed, I think at this point, it's about, it's seven dams restoring over 110 miles of creeks in this county for migration and spawning for coho salmon and steelhead trout. I'm extremely proud of this. This photo shows the Bondi Weir. It was the lowermost barrier to fish migration in the San Franciscito Creek. On the left side of the photo is public property, Santa Clara County, owned by City of Palo Alto. On the right side, private property, Menlo Park, this county. The fish don't know whose jurisdiction it is. And one of the things that I think that we're uniquely able to do is work across jurisdictions to do what's best for the resource. And in my career, I consider some of our dam removal projects to be among my greatest accomplishments. It's so gratifying to go into a creek like this, or like the elapsed time video you saw, and stand in a spot where a creek is wild and free, and fish are moving through where there was a dam just so recently before. And of course, particularly on the coast, agriculture is at the heart of coastal San Mateo County. Our services to farmers and ranchers help to ensure the agriculture remains viable. We work extensively with a number of partners on this. And we also work to ensure the agriculture itself is of service to the environment. The RCD was formed by farmers in 1939, and to this day, we help to ensure that agriculture continues to thrive while being part of the solutions and integrated into the other conversations in the county. Our partnership with you, with the county, is extensive. And this is a partial list of what we're doing. This is a lot of words. You don't need to read through all of them. I think the message is, we're doing a lot together. And I wanted to highlight at the top of the fact that the county has provided for the last two years some operating support to the RCD, and also bridge funds that have enabled us to access state bond dollars and bring them into the county. And this has been a tremendous value and leverage. And I also wanted to take a moment just to recognize the heavy lifting and expertise we've received, some extraordinarily competent staff at the county. I just want to recognize to you directly Greg Smith from Environmental Health, Anne Stillman and Julie Casa Grande from the Department of Public Works, the ag commissioner Fred Crowder, Marlene Finley, Ramona Orecaga, Scott Lombardi, and Sam Hertzberg from County Parks, Steve Monowitz and Mike Schaller from Planning, and literally everyone in your office, including you, Supervisor Horsley. I don't know that the RCD would have accomplished a tenth of what we've accomplished without these particular people at the county helping out. And then the message that I always like to give you is, at our most recent calculation, what was the bang for the buck of property taxes? The RCD receives $57,000 a year in property taxes. For every dollar that we received from our last calculation, that leveraged $42 in state and federal funds coming into this county. The challenge we face, of course, is that that property tax is very small, but can we just take a moment to say, with $57,000, the RCD has done a lot? And so I'm going to put a plug in here to welcome the opportunity to talk with the county further about how to better support the RCD and position the RCD so that we can support the county's vision for 2025. And I do believe that the RCD is a key partner in delivering that vision. I'd love to talk with you at some point more about how we can accomplish that. And so, of course, I'm very passionate about the work that the RCD does. I love to talk about it. I thank you very much for this opportunity and for opportunities to partner with you and to tell you about what we're up to, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Horsley? No, just to go, thanks, Kellex. You know, one thing, on the South Coast, oftentimes, people don't necessarily, they don't have a lot of contact with the government, and they don't necessarily always trust us. But the, RCD is trusted by everybody: landowners, nonprofits, farmers, whether they're organic or commercial. She is the one agency that's really trusted by all of those constituents on the South Coast. So thanks for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Good job. Yeah, thank you. I just had a quick question on the Memorial Park work. I happen to love Memorial Park, have fond memories of taking the kids there camping with your kids, too, like a lot of years ago. But I'm curious, so it looked like the dam was removed, or—
That's right.
Could you speak about that for a little bit?
Sure. So the county had left that, and Marlene may want to add to this, the county had left the dam open for a number of years for some operational needs. But the structure itself still posed a barrier for coho salmon and steelhead trout to be able to reach about 62 miles of habitat upstream, and altered the hydrology and the way sediment moves through that system, had a lot of problems with impacts on the ecosystem. So the county had on its radar to remove that dam for a long time, going back to when Dave Hollinge was in charge of County Parks, is when we started working with the county on this project. And it took years for, it was a complicated project. It took years for permits and funding and everything to line up, and then, and all the agencies to, resource agencies to be aligned on what they would require of that project. It was actually two parts. There was a stream crossing to get to the campground, the Sequoia Flats campground downstream, and then the dam. Both of them together were how we approached the project.
Thank you. Good work.
Just to tell a little bit more about that dam, it used to be that, used to, the Parks Department, actually, we used to get people out of the sheriff's audit camp, they would put boards in, there was some kind of a structure, and what it would do is become a swimming hole. So it completely blocked access to fish upstream. So that's, that was actually the project that I visited after you had completed that. And it's a remarkable amount of habitat that has been restored.
And ironically, so the most heartburn I heard about that project were people who were sad about losing the swimming hole, including myself. And what's ironic is that the swimming hole wasn't really there because the boards had been taken out for years. But now that the dam is gone, the creek has naturally created a scour pool, and there's a great pool there for swimming in.
Very nice.
Yeah. And it's natural. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kellex.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the next item on the regular agenda. I wasn't sure, Supervisor Groom, if the judge was here, and you wanted to do this now, or—
Well, she cannot come.
Okay.
She cannot come today because she had an early case that she wasn't anticipating.
Okay. And did you want to—
I would like to, if I could.
Yes, of course, please.
I just wanted to ask you all—
We were referring to item 17? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to ask you all to adopt a resolution honoring Judge Elizabeth Lee. She was recognized with the Rose Byrd Memorial Award at the California Women Lawyer 16th Annual California Judicial Reception this past Friday. It's a really distinguished honor. And so, I would make the motion that we adopt this resolution.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I could just say a word or two. She was appointed to the Superior Court bench in 2005, handling criminal matters in the Northern California, in the Northern County Courthouse. She spent four and a half years in the juvenile court, where she presided over delinquency and dependency cases, before assuming her current position as criminal presiding judge in the courthouse here in Redwood City. She's been actively involved in improving access to justice and ensuring better outcomes for women and for children, you know, who enter our court system. She's also made significant contributions to human trafficking, which is a very important issue that this board has been dealing with, especially Supervisor Tissier, for quite a while. She's been a frequent lecturer. She has a co-authorship of a program guide for judges on human trafficking for the National Association of Women Judges. She is, her services Chair of the National Association of Women Judges Human Trafficking Committee. She's also founded and served as the Chair of the San Mateo County Blue Ribbon Commission for Foster Care Children. She's a frequent volunteer on the youth court in East Palo Alto, and she's been serving as a member of the California Child Welfare Council. She's really a great leader in our county, and the Judge Byrd Award was certainly a wonderful recognition of what she's accomplished. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now, we'll move on, if we could, to item number three, which is a public hearing to, number one, consider a general plan map amendment changing the land use designation of one parcel from open space to timber production, and two, a zoning map amendment to rezone same parcel from resource management to timberland preserve zone, and three, Williamson Act contract non-renewal. Mr. Monowitz.
Good morning, Presidents, local members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. The general plan and zoning amendments that are before you are a side result of the updates to the Williamson Act program that were put in place a few years back. And as you may recall from those discussions at that time, there was a question as to whether timber harvesting should be considered a type of agricultural use that would qualify a property for a Williamson Act contract. And during that discussion, we determined that there were two properties located in the resource management zoning district that were affected by the changes to the Williamson Act program, which, in the end, the decision was to not include timber harvesting as a qualifying agricultural use, and to instead, work with the affected landowners to rezone the properties from resource management to timberland production, because the timberland preserve zoning district provide, the properties in that district are taxed in a manner that are, that is generally equivalent to the way Williamson Act contracted properties are taxed. So, the, one of the two affected landowners came forward to work with us towards that rezoning, and the item before you is a product of that effort. And to present the details, I'd like to introduce Senior Planner Melissa Ross.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. My name is Melissa Ross. I'm Senior Planner with the Planning and Building Department. And I'd just like to give a brief overview of the property. This is a 40-acre parcel that is located in the lower half of San Mateo County, adjacent to Santa Cruz County and Santa Clara County borders. Currently, general plan land use designation is open space, and the zoning district, its zoning district is resource management. And as you can see, highlighted in yellow on the right-hand side, the property is in a mix of timber preserve, timberland preserve, production zone, zoning districts, and open space resource management districts. And you can tell from the aerial here that the property is heavily forested. And as the Community Development Director had stated, the board considered timber harvesting during its 2014 review of Williamson Act program as not an agricultural use to qualify for a contract. Therefore, the landowner had an option to rezone his property from resource management to timberland preserve. This is the only landowner that has requested that rezone. During the January 13th public hearing, the Planning Commission did review the rezone, and they did recommend approval. Regarding regulation compliance, the rezone is in conformance with the county's general plan policies regarding management of forestry resources and encouraging existing and potential timber production land uses. The parcel is compliant with the timberland preserve zone in that the land meets the definition of timber and timberland, and has met the entry by petition requirements of the zoning regulations. The California Land Conservation Act states that lands zoned for timber production are ineligible for contract renewal, and that the county must serve its intent to non-renew the contract. And to that, the department has prepared a notice of non-renewal of California Land Conservation Act, contract. And regarding the California Environmental Quality Act, the rezone is a statutory exemption under Section 15264 for timberland preserves. In order for the board to approve their rezoning, a couple of findings must be made, that the land, that the general plan land use map amendment is compatible with adjacent land uses, and will not be in conflict with the policies of the general plan, and that the proposed rezoning of the subject parcel meets the public necessity, convenience, and the general welfare of the community. This land has been used for timber harvesting in the past. There was a timber, non-industrial timber management plan that was submitted in 2010. It was withdrawn, but it is historically used for timber harvesting. The landowner has informed me that, excuse me, that they intend to continue with timber harvesting, and then have signed a contract with a licensed timber operator to submit for a timber harvesting plan to CAL FIRE in the near future. And as discussed in the staff report, it's staff recommendation that the board adopt the resolution to amend the general plan land use map, adopt the ordinance revising the zoning maps to the requested designations, and adopt the resolution authorizing the Planning and Building Department to file a notice of non-renewal of California Land Conservation Contract. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to help answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Monowitz, do you have anything further?
I just wanted to observe that, I understand that the board has received a letter from Committee for Green Foothills requesting a continuance of the matter in order to pursue some sort of agreement or easement with the property owner regarding preservation of old-growth trees. And although I haven't seen the letter, I just have to offer a few comments. The redesignation to timberland preserve, in addition to maintaining the same property tax basis, is really intended to enable the landowner to continue with timber harvesting. And that process requires the landowner to obtain the necessary permits from the state. And through that process, it's the state that determines which trees can be removed and which trees can stay. The county really doesn't have jurisdiction to dictate that through that process certain trees be preserved, or that certain trees be removed. So, it's my feeling that the county doesn't really have the authority to require any sort of conservation easement over old-growth trees, and would recommend that the board take the recommended action. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions to Mr. Monowitz on that point, or other points? There being none. Motion to open the public hearing. Set. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have two speaker cards on the matter. First is Lenny Roberts.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm Lenny Roberts, speaking for Committee for Green Foothills. As we've been following this rezoning, and we don't object to the redesignation and the rezoning. However, this property is unique among private properties in San Mateo County in that it does have a significant number of old-growth redwood trees that were left behind in previous timber harvests because they were defective, which means they just weren't perfect, and so, they didn't cut them. Too difficult to, didn't get enough for the trouble of removing them. But today, of course, we know how valuable old-growth redwoods are. They're very unusual in private property. There's 60 of them or so on this property. They're along the two tributaries to Oil Creek, which is a tributary to Pascadero Creek, which is, we just heard about, importance of Pascadero Creek and the upper watershed for steelhead and Coho, as well as other species. So, we're concerned, this is the one opportunity the county has. You can't, you can't dictate what happens to this timber harvest plan, or the review under the State Forest Practices Act. But you can ask, at this point, to, I would like to ask you to have a continuance of a month, to hopefully have the applicant and their representative consider how they might provide for some kind of long-term protection of those old-growth trees. The county can't ask, and when it goes through the state review process for timber harvesting, the county can't ask that those trees be protected, nor can anybody else that's not in our hands to do that. So, except for other agencies, which may have some bearing if they can find a reason such as merlets. But merlets have not been detected on this property in a previous survey. So, I would think it would be in everybody's best interest, and I would hope the owners would also, they have said in the previous hearing at the Planning Commission that Mr. Burlage, their representative, said that they had instructed them to, was their intent to protect these trees, but they could sell the property, and other owners wouldn't have the same interest. So, we would just like to see if we can work out through the next month a way to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, the next speaker is Bob Burlage.
President Slocum, members of the board, I'm Bob Burlage with Big Creek Lumber Company, and we support staff's recommendation to rezone this property. Frankly, it would be a tremendous disservice to this applicant to postpone this rezoning. They've been trying to rezone this for five years, and the rezoning is, it's straightforward. It's not a permit to cut trees. It's just simply acknowledging an oversight that, back in the early 80s, the county missed this property. It has all the qualifications to be rezoned, and was supposed to be rezoned to TP, to acknowledge that timber trees were the agricultural commodity. It's true, Big Creek Lumber Company is currently writing a timber harvest plan, and in that timber harvest plan, the applicant requested that we write a plan that would exclude the harvest of any old-growth trees. And that's what we're going to do. It's being written in that manner right now. This is not the venue to deal with what trees are going to be cut and not cut. Our company was in a seven-year lawsuit with the county of Santa Cruz. The state Supreme Court determined that the, the manner in which you conduct a harvest is part of the timber harvest review process, with CAL FIRE being the lead agency. Now, Ms. Roberts, the county has every right and encourage all of you to participate in the review of that plan and weigh in on it once we filed that. But pursuant to public resource, state public resource code 51113 and 51113.5, the rezoning here is straightforward. There has to be a management plan written by a registered professional forester, which at county council's request and your board's request, that's been done, and it has to be capable of growing 15 cubic feet per acre of wood per year. And it meets those qualifications, and really frankly, in fairness to this applicant, it should be rezoned. If there are issues about old-growth trees, you can participate, we urge the county to participate, and they're, they're part of the interdisciplinary review team. If there are concerns, and if Ms. Roberts thinks they want to pursue some easement with the applicant, they can do that privately in a separate process, but this isn't the place for that. This is just a rezoning to make up for an oversight on the county's part decades ago. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this? I have no other cards. All right.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A question?
Yeah. Supervisor Planner.
For Mr. Monowitz, or maybe Mr. Fox? So, when a timber harvest plan is, I guess, goes to the state for approval, and that's like binding on the, that applicant, I assume. So, if that applicant's plan, as has been stated here, says, "We're not going to cut the old growth, the 60-old-growth trees," and then subsequently, the property is sold, there's someone else involved, would they have to, they'd have to resubmit a, would they need to resubmit a timber harvesting plan to the state? In other words?
Yes, that's correct. If the current owner submits an application that does not include the removal of certain area of trees, new landowner comes in, purchases the property, and wants to harvest an area that was not included in the initial timber harvest permit, they'd have to get a new one to allow it.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Horstley?
And as I understand it, the timber harvest plan is actually a 20-year plan. Correctness?
I'm going to let Melissa Ross address that.
I saw Bob throw up his hands, but.
There are two types of timber harvesting permits issued by the state, and one is a standard timber harvest permit, which is usually a one-time permitting for about a year or two. It can be extended. The longer permits are non-industrial timber management plans. Those are longer-duration permits that are 20, 30 years, and they include multiple harvests within that timeframe.
Okay. Well, in any case, I actually have gone out to see some of the timber harvesting that Big Creek has done, and they actually, they do, do it in a sustainable way, whether you, you know, like timber harvesting or not, they actually do a pretty good job, and they actually do it in a pretty sustainable way. So, I'm, I'm actually prepared to support the resolution.
Is that a motion?
A motion to all, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution amending San Mateo County's general plan land use map to change the land use of one parcel from open space to timber production in unincorporated South Skyline area. And can I also just include items two and three?
Sure. Item two and three is listed on the agenda, would be part of that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Monowitz and Melissa. Thank you. At 1:30, we will be convening for the presentation of service awards. But now, we'll move on to item number five, which is a report on the implementation of Laura's Law.
Mr. President, we still have item number 37 on consent to discuss.
On which?
Number 37.
Okay. Yeah. You want to do that?
You could do 37 at, you know, whenever you think is appropriate, President.
All right. Okay. We'll go ahead with this, and then we'll catch up.
Good morning, President Slocum, board members, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. Pleased to be here to give you an update on our implementation of AB 1421, otherwise known as Laura's Law. No? Okay. We're going to do a PowerPoint-less presentation, but we'll go through the information, sorry about that. As you recall, you originally approved the implementation. As you recall, you originally approved implementation last June and at the September budget hearings approved the positions for our team to move forward. So, we'll give you an update today about where we're at and then subsequently where we're headed from our accomplishments to date. One of the first key things that we needed to do once the positions were approved is our recruitment for our team, as I mentioned, and we were really pleased that Terry Wilcox-Ritkers, who's here with me today, stepped forward and expressed interest in managing this important project. And as many of you know, Terry has a long history of great experiences with this population of individuals who we expect to serve. So, I'm going to turn over the next part of the presentation to Terry and he can give you an update on where he is at in the implementation.
Thank you. Well, it's wonderful to be here with you today and a pleasure to have us rolling out LoRa's Law, which we're also calling Assisted Outpatient Treatment Services. One of the things I want to make sure that you know is what the eligibility criteria is, and many of you may already know this, but I'm just going to go over it. You have to be at least 18 years old. You need to be seriously mentally ill. Need to be unable to survive safely in the community without supervision. You have to have a history of lack of compliance with treatment, as evidenced by at least one of the following, and the first point would be that you've been hospitalized or incarcerated at least two times in the past 36 months for your mental illness, or you've, you're experiencing violent behavior towards yourself or others during the past 48 months. And also that previously to being offered, that you've previously been offered treatment and on a voluntary basis and you've refused it, and you're currently decompensating in the community. So, those are the key points that we'll be looking at when people refer members of our community for the assisted outpatient treatment services. The petition process, and basically this is talking about who could actually refer people to the assisted outpatient treatment team services. This would be an adult who's living with the person and knows the person very well. It's a parent, a spouse, a sibling, or any significant other person over the age of 18 who knows the person. A director or designee of a treatment facility that's currently treating the person for their mental illness. A licensed mental health counselor or clinician who is treating the person, or a law enforcement officer, parole officer, or probation officer that's working with them. Now, we want to kind of go over the process of referring people and how that's all going to play out. And what we've done is we've modeled our plan after what other counties in California are doing. There's a couple of them that are up and running and others that are, you know, in the process of implementing their services. Orange County in particular is the one that has been up and running for, I guess, a couple of years now and really has some good data for us to look at. We've decided to use the approach of having all the referrals come in through a dedicated phone line so that we make sure we get all of them and we're not missing somebody, rather than people coming in with information in their pockets that, oh, Bob grabbed me on the way in and wants me to have his family member as a part of the program. Once we get the call, one of our staff will review the call and gather basic information. So, we'll call the person back that called in and gather basic information. At that point, we'll do kind of a general screening to see if they actually meet the criteria for LoRa's Law. What we found from Orange County is that many of the calls that come in, actually the majority of them, do not meet the criteria and, but they need resources, they need other kinds of things. And because of our long history in San Mateo County of working with folks and developing a lot of other good resources, our team will be able to plug them into the other resources that may meet their needs. And we'll provide them with a warm handoff so that they're not just left wondering what that other resource is. For those people who do seem to meet the criteria, we're going to go ahead and gather more information in a very structured way from the provider, from the caller. We're also going to do a background, look at whatever data we have in our information banks to find out more about the person, engage other members in the community that know them. Once we have that, then we'll actually go out into the community and meet with the person. So, we'll have our team members go out as a team and engage the person and their family and really try to create a relationship there to help them feel safe and hopefully open to receiving these services we have to offer. What we know is that a lot of the people we'll be engaging may not be very open to the services, so we're going to continue to provide case management and outreach and, you know, just see whatever, sometimes somebody just needs a cup of coffee or a warm place to sleep, and that's like the first step to really getting them engaged. So, we're going to be engaging them for at least 30 days and we'll continue to engage them. The hope is at some point along there, they'll accept the services voluntarily. Now, if they don't, if they don't accept the services and we still believe that they meet the criteria for LoRa's Law, we're going to let them know that we would be referring them to a court process to have them court ordered into treatment. At that point, we'd also, we're doing a lot of county-wide planning at this point in terms of meeting with the private defender's office and county council and the courts and our other partners to make sure that we have all the components ready for when this gets going. We'll be referring the person to our private defender's office so that they get counsel around the, you know, court process and also the benefits of being a part of LoRa's Law. So, if they decide that they're not going to receive the services, we would petition the court through county council to review the case. What's going to happen at that point is that we'll start, we'll do an official assessment, so we'll have our psychologist do an official evaluation that'll be prepared for the court, and then we'll prepare to go to court to our LoRa's Law judge to have the case presented. If they, what the judge is going to do, and all the way through this process, we're going to keep on offering the services and hope that they change their mind and accept the services. What the judge will do when it actually comes to the day of court will be the judge will review all the information and decide, does this person meet the criteria? If they do, they're going to refer them to our full-service partnership, which is our main treatment plan for folks. And so, they'll be court ordered into treatment and we'll help them get connected. We'll probably have the full-service partnership represented there in court. For those people who already accepted the services, we're going to go ahead, you know, while they're out in the community, we're going to go ahead and make sure that they get directly connected to our full-service partnership and provide a warm handoff. So, just another little point, when they get court ordered into treatment, it's for 180 days with 60-day reviews that take place to see how they're doing. And depending on the judge and how we end up setting it up, these reviews, the judge could request the person to come in more frequently to be kind of supportive and encouraging of their success in treatment. And one thing I want to also mention that this is a civil process, so nobody's committed a crime, there's no misdemeanor or felony. So, we'll be handling this through a civil process similar to the way LPS court is held. And the reality is that whoever is court ordered into treatment, they don't have to follow through with it. There's really no legal teeth in this. It's just that we're giving people more and more opportunity to engage the services that might benefit them. As far as our team, we're in the midst of hiring the staff for the AOT team. As you know, I'm the clinical services manager for it. We're going to also have a psychologist, a licensed clinical social worker. We're going to have a peer support worker, and that's somebody with lived experience who really knows what it's like to be in the other person's position, which is so key. We'll have a deputy public guardian who already has years of experience working with the LPS court process and engaging people in community and facilities, and we'll have administrative support. The duties we have for our AOT team is to gather and assess referral information, to engage the person and his or her significant others, to motivate and empower the referred party to see the benefits of the offered services, and to provide hope that this can really make a difference in their lives. We're going to provide resources and connections, whether they're something offered by our AOT team or something else that we happen to have in the community. We're going to provide supportive case management services in order to help the person effectively engage the resources that they're lacking. As I was saying, our main treatment is our full-service partnership. So, it's services, it's wraparound intensive case management services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It includes psychiatric services, wellness and recovery services, housing support services, connection and support to education, employment, recreational and social services. And one of the really key things about this is that we're all, we're all in this in a collaborative way across our service network to make sure people have a chance of making it. And we're going to make sure that if some, what typically happens for a lot of the folks we're talking about is they get started on a medication or they refuse to take it and they decompensate. So, one of our plans with the full-service partnership is the minute somebody misses a dose of medication, the minute there's a question about whether they're cheeking it or not, that case manager is going to take them into our psychiatric emergency services, which is going to be expecting them and is going to welcome them the way it should be and is going to stabilize them on their medication and send them back out with their case manager. So, that's kind of an overview of where we're at, and I'll turn it back over to Steve.
Thanks, Terry. Just to talk a little bit about next steps, we're just about in the final stages of the request for proposal process to select a contractor for the full-service partnership. We're hoping we'll be back to the board in late May or early June with the contract for your approval. We would expect that the provider will be able to enroll clients in the program in mid-July. Terry's team will actually start taking referrals in mid to late June because as you heard from Terry, there's a whole process in terms of outreach and engagement and information gathering, et cetera. So, once we have that solidified, the quote "marketing" out to the community will begin. We don't want to have referrals coming too soon and not be able to do anything and then people get disappointed, so we'll need to time that carefully. But we should be starting to market in June to accept referrals mid-June to late June, and Terry's team will then work forward in that. So, by mid-July, people should start getting enrolled in the program. Just a little editorial comment, in talking to my counterpart in Orange County, as Terry mentioned, they've been doing this about two years, and when we made our presentations to your board previously, we talked a little bit about their experience in implementation. That initial experience is still holding true after two years. As you may recall, what we were indicating was they were getting a lot of referrals. As Terry mentioned, most of the people are not eligible for LoRa's Law but in need of some kind of treatment or support, and they've been doing that. Very, very few people have actually been ordered by the court into treatment. They've been very successful engaging people who are eligible voluntarily in the program, which I think makes it a much more effective program. In talking to Mary Hale's, my counterpart, what she now has concluded is their implementation of this has given them another piece, a very effective piece, in their ability to do outreach and engagement. She sees it as really a new engagement strategy for their system, so I'm hoping that, and I would expect our experiences will be the same. So, we'll be glad to answer any questions at this point. Thank you. Thank you, Terry, and thank you, Steve, for the report. I believe Supervisor Tissia has a question.
Steve, I just had a quick question. When you talked about, once they rolled this out, they got a lot of calls, referral calls, and most of them didn't fit the criteria, were these first-time individuals being introduced to the system?
Not all. They, again, in talking to Ms. Hale from Orange County, a lot of the calls were from family members who were having different experiences in getting care for their loved ones, and they were looking for another way to engage the system to maybe redirect the care that they were given. But there were some first-time callers that, I don't know what to do, I'm new to this, my son or daughter has had a first break and I don't know what to do, I'm not connected with their local NAMI chapter, so it really runs the gamut of those calls. But they were surprised by the volume of calls they received.
I think it's important, as you said, to be doing the same type of outreach because I do think we will have some first-time families that really are reluctant to come forward. You know, there's always that little bit of that stigma and they don't want, but when they realize that, you know, this may be the only way to get some really good help, I think we'll probably see some success ourselves. Thank you for your good work.
Anybody else?
Yeah, actually, I was going to say, Terry and I have been in several community meetings on the coast side talking about mental health services, and I do know the Case Management Works Act, you know, the sheriff's department had a pop shop program and it, case management does in fact work. But, you know, I will, I got to point out on your performance measures are a little difficult to understand in a way. One of the things I would, I'd actually like to see you put down the number of people who actually end up enrolled in the program. I'd like to actually know what those numbers are. And the other, you're, the one in the agenda packet says percentage slash number of people ordered into full-service treatment partnerships involuntarily who will comply with court orders. You have down 75% or three.
Yeah, it's small. We're expecting a small, well, remember, Orange County's experience and they're, what, twice as big as we are, they've had less than 10 people in two years through the court system.
Okay. I'd like to know, as a performance measure, the number of people who actually are enrolled in a program, and the number of people who actually are, have to go through the court system and just, and then the other, that's just my, I like numbers.
Well, you know, what we do, I should remind you that in our program description and what you approve funding for is an independent evaluation of this program. So, we're going to collect far more data than is on that piece of paper. So, we will look at all of the referral information, who's accepted services voluntarily, who had to go to court, what was the specific disposition of the court referrals, who's stuck in the program, who's continued to be on the six months. So, we're, we've got, we're going to have a full evaluation plan for this, and then we will present that to your board.
Yeah, the other one had to do with percentage of decrease of hospital days, and it says 17 days, and I assume you're talking about cumulative.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
Just one question. Do you think this, this program will help with the, some of the mentally homeless individuals with mental health challenges that are so difficult to, for us to provide services to?
I'd say something Terry might have, absolutely. The team, as Terry mentioned, will not be an office-based team. They will be out in the community and they will connect with all of the other outreach efforts that are going on, whether it's with our HOT team or PERT or the field crisis teams that are out there in the community to identify people who are seriously mentally ill, who are homeless, to engage them to see are they connected to our services, aren't, and whether or not they meet the criteria. So, I think this team will have a natural, well, I shouldn't say natural, this team will be connected to those other outreach efforts into the homeless delivery system.
I think that focus would be very valuable and time well spent.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We have one speaker on this matter. Martin Fox.
Thank you very much for all that you've done. I deeply appreciate it. I deeply appreciate the questions about patient acquisition because I agree that the system that's appropriate for acquiring patients in Orange County has been productive, but I believe Orange County is over 3 million people and we have 740,000. And I think Supervisor Tissia was insightful in understanding that there's a certain rule. And I think Supervisor Tissia was insightful in understanding that there's a certain reluctance. We have a very successful team in the Sheriff's Office, PERT. And the reason it's successful is because we have a detective sheriff who looks at records because he knows, we already know where to start. We don't need a gold-plated toilet seat. I spent a few hours in the back end of a C-141 and the regular one works just fine. You don't need the $17,000 addition. Let's take a look at our records and have the team start out with a point of view like the Sheriff's Department starts off with. We know who they are, let's start there. Success there will spread like wildfire because this is a community that is very much one that talks amongst itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byers, we don't have to have a motion on this, we're just accepting the reports, is that right?
Yeah, I would agree. It says, it says, "Accept the report." That sort of implies action, so go ahead and make a motion if you will.
I'm gonna accept.
Second. All of us in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you. We're going to do item 37 now. I see the sheriff and the other sheriff here. So, I don't know.
Mr. President, I'll lead off and then Sheriff Monks can follow up. As the board recalled, last fall, we had a work session on the potential reuse of the Maguire, old Maguire facility. The board provided us with direction at that meeting and now we wanted to come back to the board to make sure that the direction the board gave us is, is still applicable as we move forward into the next phase, which obviously involves a significant expenditure of funds.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malpe. President Slocum, honorable board members, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. As the county manager described, you've got before you a report back, it was about a year ago that you funded a study by AE Comm to take a look at the old Maguire facility and what possible reuses might be available to us. You may also recall that we made the decision to complete the first floor of the new correctional center. And as part of that process, we decided to close and take offline old Maguire, due in part to the age of that facility and also to declining jail population. So we hired AE Comm to take a look at possible reuses for that facility. And I have with us today Scott Preston and Roger Lichtman from AE Comm as well as Sam Lynn from our jail planning unit. And what I'd like to do at this point is turn it over to them to walk you through the process that they undertook to consider different reuses and what our eventual recommendations are regarding the old Maguire facility. So, Sam?
Thank you, Sheriff. Good morning, honorable members, county manager and council. My name is Sam Lynn, I'm the senior capital project manager at the Sheriff's Office. I would like to just touch base briefly on the short history of this repurpose of the old Maguire. Several months ago, we had a request from the county manager's office to look into the repurpose of the building because as we all know, when the new Maple Street facility opens, we were able to relocate all the laundry, the kitchen and administrative function and over into the new facility. And by shuffling some of the existing inmate space, we were able to gain roughly additional 45,000, 42,000 square footage for its, you know, to be determined purpose of use. And from the beginning, we were actually requested to look into whether it's possible to put the new EOC or the CETA project at Maguire's site. And after the study with AE Comm, we discovered that the very stringent seismic requirement for the EOC would be very cost prohibitive to upgrade the whole old Maguire facility. And on top of that, the current footprint of the facility is not adequate to support the new CETA project. And so that's our recommendation back then. And we then looked into the other purpose of this Maguire and we felt because of the bridging in connecting between the Hall of Justice and New Maguire plus the adjacency of the Maguire is probably most suitable for the new sheriff's headquarters. And by also accommodating some of the community outreach space for future community meetings or gatherings by incorporating into this headquarters function. So with that being said, we, we felt that it's very, very viable to put all the existing sheriff's functions in the approximately 50,000 square footage into this existing facility by adding additional floor and some of the cantilever space. And it's very viable and also because we're not required to build in the new facility, it's also has tremendous cost-saving by just retrofit the building into the sheriff's headquarters. And I want to pass on the, the conceptual evolution of this project and Mr. Roger Lichtman, the architect from AE Comm, will talk about this. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. If you have any questions, I suggest you ask as we go because I don't know how detailed that you actually want to get into this, but starting with the aerial view, obviously, where we stand, so you can see, I think an important point to mention is the fact that old Maguire and new Maguire are essentially tied at the hip. So as Sam points out, that it would be rather difficult, I mean, for an alternative use because obviously on the fourth floor, we have inmates going back and forth to court every day, coming from new Maguire through old Maguire across the bridge. So conceptually, here's what we would be looking at. This is a view from the northwest, looking at the front. The idea would be to take the precast facade off of the building, expose the existing structure, bring that structure at that point up to code, seismic code, and then go ahead and put a new facade on the outside so that it would be more aesthetically pleasing towards a downtown redwood city, a government center, if you will, appealing to the public. And then we also talked about the possibility, and you'll see here in a couple of minutes, putting a community space on the ground floor. So here's a couple of the views of what it would look like. The idea being as well, on the north side, leaving that, the trove of trees that remains there as a public center. So on the first floor, what we can see here is that it opens to the front, you can see the trees in the front there. And that blue space that you see, that would be a community room that could be either rented out or used by the community with separate access so that the public would not have to go through the sheriff's facilities to, to get to it, although the exterior could be closed off and it could be used for private use for the sheriffs coming in from the sheriff's lobby. The idea here being that the, the open front being essentially glass and open to the floor above so that it's a two-story space coming in. As part of the exercise, what we did was we went and did a full architectural and operational program with the sheriff's department, understanding how much square footage each of the sheriff's department subcomponents were currently utilizing in their own space, how efficient it was, what the interrelationships were prior to then going back. And it came out approximately 10% higher for future growth and for needs now, and then laid that into the space here within the same adjacency arrangements that they determined that they would like to have. Obviously, everybody wanted the first floor and access off the first floor, which was difficult, but hence the idea of coming in with the open second floor so that when somebody does walk in, they're not disoriented, they can see the department that they need to get to and then several elevators in order to get them there. Coming on up through the building, over here on this floor, the fourth floor, you can see that the maintenance of the, coming from old Maguire, going across through new Maguire, on the right-hand side there is the existing bridge that goes back across to this building, the Hall of Justice, coming straight across without interfering at all. It's basically a secure perimeter within the building so that there's no interaction between the new sheriff's facility and the inmates coming back and forth. And then adding on, because I don't know how many of you have been up there, but the precast goes all the way up and in order for that to happen, the structure needs to go all the way up and there's essentially a roof structure on the top despite the fact that there is not a roof on there, but it's fenced in because right now it's an outdoor rec area, but it is inhabited space. So that allows us fairly easily to add the fifth floor for a total of approximately 61,000 square feet. So that it easily accommodates the needs of the sheriff's department subcomponents right now. And unless there's any questions on, on that, I'd like to turn it over to Scott to talk about budget and schedule.
Good morning. My name is Scott Preston. So obviously on to the interesting parts as well, which are cost and schedule. I think what we've done is done a roll-up for you here of the costs, both construction and total project cost. I think the important things to sort of understand within the costs are, one, that we are meeting lead silver. We did a quick estimate of this facility and checklist. Looks like we can solidly meet lead silver for this building. We think going to gold might be a 2% to 3% add, so that would be something to consider. We do have the seismic improvement of the building, which is an important feature, and obviously adding the fifth floor and a little bit of square footage we're adding on the north. So I think the other thing to note about the budget is, you could tell with a lot more of the background, is that this building's probably 15%, 20% less than what a new building would cost. It really comes down to the fact that all the foundations, the steel structure, the slabs, all the bones of the building are good and reusable. So we are reusing those. And it's not only going to save us money, but it's also going to save us time. Steel is one of the most volatile building trades out there now, acquiring it and getting it in a timely fashion. So this makes a lot of sense as, you know, as a project from a cost standpoint as well. And it's a very good use, as we've said, for the adjacencies of these buildings. I think the fine print, as it were, sort of relates what's in the cost. There is enough contingency to meet whatever changing conditions may happen as we find them. We have a 20% design and a 10% construction, so while it seems rather high, it's because we're at a very conceptual level of estimating. The next item is really the schedule. And we, we put somewhat detailed schedule together, it's thought at this point, and this reflects a design-build approach where we would start off doing bridging documents and then go through a selection process to award the design builder and then move on into design and construction. Total, I think, 31 months. It's almost split 50/50 on either way, design, procurement and construction. If we were building a new building, I would easily add three or four months at least to that schedule if we were going to have to order steel, et cetera, et cetera. There's still some steel we're ordering, but on a much smaller scale. So the only other thing to note is we would need to do the EIR work sort of in parallel and, and that would want to start, that's the gray line there below for CEQA. So that's the schedule in a nutshell. We think it's very doable and viable. It's, it's a very good project, I think. Thank you.
Okay, happy to answer any questions and our experts are here as well.
President, if I could just add one thing before the, the board starts asking questions. Keeping in mind that, that this project, obviously its location is part of the Civic Center campus, we should remember that, that ultimately this project will reduce the size of office building three and, and the cost factors, because this is, will be a cheaper project than that project going forward. That's the first point I want to make. Second point I want to make is time and money. We all know how volatile this, this construction market is and it's important to, to get going as soon as possible when the board's ready to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Horsley.
Well, I mean, I, I, it's not that I'm opposed to what the sheriff wants to do. In fact, I probably know more about this building than anybody because I was wandering around on the steel when it was being built and I'm not wedded to the jail at all. So, and I know and I knew that there really isn't much else that you could do with this. You can't turn it to house and you probably can't turn it into a garage. But, you know, what my concern was really, you know, I've probably seen in the last five years, six different master plans and I've never seen us approve one. And I've never seen, you know, you talked about a study session we did sometime back, almost a year ago. I don't remember seeing this in the study session. Maybe, and I knew that the sheriff was interested and I would be, if I were him, I'd be interested in this as well. But I don't think we made any specific decisions at that time. I think we did talk, we were talking about at the time about the law library and we, you know, should we buy another building and, and in that case, I started looking at, so in that case, going back to it, I don't think we've done a study session on this. I'm glad that we're actually seeing it today and it, it does make some degree of sense. And so I, I really want, you know, I'm not opposed to what the sheriff wants to do, but I still think it needs to be part of taking a look at our whole, overall master plan for the whole campus. I think there should be a study session on the whole of the plan and there should be figuring out highest and best use. And, you know, the other thing is I was looking at all the things that we've been doing recently and the things that are on the drawing board, Corollaries, we did finish Maple Street, was 165 million, then we added another 25 million to finish out the, for want of a better term, the warm space. And then, you know, we've got the Office of Emergency Services and the Public Safety Dispatch, we're looking at a parking garage, looking at retrofitting the, that this county building, I guess if this goes, General Hospital, I understand, we're looking at office space, we, we're looking at a new county office building. We're spending a lot of money without, without thinking about where's this all coming from? You know, how, how does this all fit together? So I'd like to see us, and again, I really want the Sheriff's Department to know, I'm not opposed to what you're saying. Maybe this is the highest and best use, but we also at the same time, you've just said the other day that we may have some problems CMS that may cost us $40 million. We also, I know in the, in this agenda item, there was an additional 5 million in the Sheriff's Department because we no longer have the mental health facility in Santa Clara County. And frankly, you know, you know, maybe we have to do some additional remodeling for that as well. So I, there's a whole lot of projects here and I don't know how this fits together. I haven't seen how this fits together. So I'm going to ask that we do a further study session. Again, I want you to know in the Sheriff's Department, I love you guys and I think you do deserve it. I know how overcrowded it is, but I'm not sure that that's our first priority.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine.
I had a couple of questions and I'll have some comments later, but let me just get my questions, if I could go through my questions. So Sheriff Monks, so if I understand, we have, you have about 42,500 square feet today. So the new facility will, will be about 50% larger, it'll be 61,000 square feet. So could you talk a little bit about, you know, the need to increase it by 50%?
Sure. The, the space that we have now doesn't include like core functions because we're part of this building. So things like elevators and HVAC systems and things like that are not factored into our space needs. So that building, we're talking about total space and is that, so it's really more of a 10%?
Yeah, it grows, grows quite a bit and it's around 50,000 square.
So our net increase of space is about 10%.
Okay.
Because we will have to support the core functions like elevators and restrooms that currently are part of the county's building.
So I didn't appreciate that. So when you say 61, that includes, you know, again, that includes everything, basically?
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed in the memo, it said that the Transportation Bureau is not moving and why is that?
Correct. Just because of their proximity to the court, we, we have to maintain holding cells in this building because of the frequency of court appearances. So they're on the fourth floor and they have holding cells both, on both sides of the tunnel, so.
Okay. And I'm not sure who's best to address this question, but I know at one point I gave some thought to just kind of putting this all together in the EOC and that was ruled out. So whoever's the right person to s- So whoever's the right person to speak to that.
I'll take a shot at it. Basically, it was the nature of the EOC building, which is extremely expensive to build because of the reinforced nature. It's basically a bunker that can withstand almost anything. It's the highest quality of building that you could possibly build. This doesn't meet those standards, so it's less expensive. So the more that we put into a very expensive building, the more expensive it's going to be. This per square foot would be much less expensive, well, less expensive to build.
So in the EOC, even if the whole thing has to be bunker-like, even, you know, you can't have only the EOC part be bunker-like?
No.
Okay.
I believe the Communication Center also needs to be built to essential building standard. So those two functions are in the highly survivable space.
And getting the gift to Sheriff, to Supervisor Horsley's inquiry is, you know, one thing that I think would be interesting is, you know, could this potentially go in the new office building that, you know, we do have on the agenda? So I guess, you know, is there urgency to, for you to move at this point?
There's no urgency for us to move other than the changing market conditions of costs. So I think these cost estimates were based on this timeline. So to the extent that we extend the timeline, I think we can expect commensurate cost increases.
Yeah. Let me ask, of course, that one's hard. I mean, we couldn't get lucky and end up having a more favorable market, who knows? But again, I'm sure, maybe this is for Mr. Mopie. So if the sheriff office is vacated to 42,000 square feet, could you speak to what would become of that property?
It would remain vacant except for the inmate tunnel that crosses from New Maguire into the Hall of Justice.
So are we thinking about putting other county functions in that or just leaving it empty?
We have not considered putting any other county functions in it, and other than some administrative space on the first floor, I don't think that any...
I think he was talking about our third floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was thinking about, we would, you know, it's office space, and we would consider, depending on the board's decision of the master plan, there are any one of a number of different functions either on this campus site or that could potentially move from off-campus to this campus that would fill that space. And remember that the construction of Office Building III on this site...
That's the big one.
That's, that's the big one. Let's not use the term big yet, but that's the new building. That will require moving the Small Claims Traffic Court quite possibly into this building, displacing some of the space that we now occupy here. So there would be a need for some additional space in this building as well. So these projects are all very interchangeable, and it's important that they be choreographed, I think, in the right order so that there's sufficient space to allow for each phase to take place without undue disruption to the functions that are ongoing in the building. And, you know, I mean, to Supervisor Horsley's point, it would be good, I think, to see all the moving parts in one place and how it might work, even though no final decisions have been completely made. But this would be an important part of it. If the sheriff's space is freed, if they're out of this building, that gives us a lot of flexibility as to how we proceed with the next functions of the project.
I guess that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, and that makes all the sense in the world.
And I also want to, I want to know...
The cost.
How we're going to pay for all this.
Right.
What's the plan? How is this going to work?
Right.
I had one more question, and I can make my comments later. You know, as I've expressed before, you know, I hope to see the day where we, our inmate population be low enough that we can use Maple Street, you know, the state-of-the-art facility for our population, you know, and if that were to occur, and we did the build-out on Old Maguire, is it possible to demolish New Maguire and leave Old Maguire standing? I mean, it might, maybe it's more for the architects or something.
Yeah, no, actually, that's one for me. We currently have 67 people in custody for either murder or attempted murder. We have close to 200 that are in either protective custody or administrative segregation. Those functions were not built into the new facility, so we would have to either build another facility to replace Maguire, albeit not perhaps as big. But we don't have the infrastructure and/or the type of housing in the new facility to accommodate our more serious population.
Now, you appreciate that. Obviously, in this, this world where the inmate population drops, you'd have to make more investments in Maple to meet those needs. But, you know, the situation today is, if I have my numbers right, is, you know, when you include the, when you include the warm shell with Maple Street and New Maguire, I think you're around close to 1,400 beds. And our inmate population is 800, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. So we have a lot of capacity. So, you know, again, it's more of a long-range perspective. But, okay, but, so I appreciate your sentiment that you don't think it could ever happen, but I would, my question was more a technical one is, you know, and again, for someone who knows how the buildings are constructed, could you tag down one building and leave the other one up?
Assuming operationally it works, yes, you could. But the other thing is that the other possibility is similar to remodeling Old Maguire as we're doing now.
Or, I guess you could remodel it, yeah. Yeah, that's probably more likely.
Could be an office building.
So I don't know if other people have questions. I do have some comments, but I'll let other people go for a while.
Sure. I believe Supervisor Tissier was next, and then we'll go to Supervisor Grubbe.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, we did talk about this a good year ago, thinking that this was the first step. Yes, we did. It was a first step in sort of that domino effect. If we didn't get people out of this building, we couldn't move people around to do some of the other buildings. I certainly understand where Don's coming from. We almost need to see a little bit of that so everyone understands that, but that was the whole point of starting this first, is so that you could get that domino effect to start. And therefore, you know, if we want to do another office building, or we want to bring people from the Health Department down to this campus, we had a place to put them. If we wanted to bring the law library internally, we could do it. And I think I understand where you're coming from, because we've had a lot of master plans, but we never said, yes, this is the one, let's go. Here's one of my concerns about prolonging it too long. I'm okay if we want to, I know your committee, I don't even know if you've met yet, but, you know, just to kind of have a sense of what that domino could be, but I also wouldn't want to wait too long for a couple of reasons. We can't get the domino effect to start till you start this one. This is already, doesn't go online till 2018. And, you know, so I think I would be willing to put it off perhaps for a month or so, but to go for six months to a year, I think, I think we're just hurting ourselves if you ever want to see a master plan happen. The other thing I want to mention, and people keep saying that, why don't you move everything from Maguire over to the new site? Well, part of what we're, the intention was at Maguire, too, is by not having as many people there, but having the serious individuals there that have to be there, we don't, can't do it at the other one, is to perhaps provide additional programming that we otherwise couldn't have done because there were all those beds that were filled over there. So, I mean, there was sort of a method to our madness at the time of building the new facility, so I just want to add that as a piece of the capacity issue. And anyway, I just think if it isn't today, I would like to see it fairly soon so that we can get that first step going, so that we can see some progress in the master plan. But since you two are the committee, you have to meet and feel good about that.
Well, it really depends on county manager. If you could come up with, you know, the whole plan and do the study session and give us an idea of how to pay for it, it could be 30 days, 60 days.
I think the how to pay for it probably won't take a very long period of time, but to be able to put together the, all the space requirements, which we are in the process of studying now, and have some sort of block diagrams where you look at, I'd have to go back and check with my staff to see how far along we are with that, and also schedule a meeting with the subcommittee before it comes back to the board. So, you know, just to be on the safe side, can we say that we'd bring back by the end of May? That gives us a little more time to work with.
That'd be helpful. Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Supervisor Grubbe.
Well, I guess I'm somewhat befuddled by all of this. I mean, we have to rebuild Cordillares in order to do the kind of proper treatment that we need there, and we've been talking about rebuilding Cordillares for a long time, so I don't think that's a surprise. The Emergency Operations Center, I've been here for seven years now, and we have been saying that the Emergency Operations Center that we had was inadequate, did not function correctly, and was really a place where employees should not be working because the working conditions weren't of a nature that they should be. So we're now underway with that, so that's not a surprise. The new office building, number three, I'm not sure, that's something I've never been positive we needed, but we've been talking about that for a long, long time just as well. And I remember when we began the discussions on the new jail, we did talk about how the sheriff could think about moving his people across the street, and we would have 30,000, 40,000 extra square feet to make room for some of our employees who are now not in this building and should be, or squished into spaces that five people should not be, should only be working for three people, and we got five people in these spaces. So I, I thought that, I mean, I really thought that we did have this plan and talked about it, maybe not in a master plan format, but I thought we'd been talking about this for some time. So if we want to wait another 30 or 60 days, but I don't think we should wait much longer than that, based on what the money, the money man just said over there, is that the cost, we need a little bit of steel, and the cost of steel is rising dramatically, and the longer we wait, the more expensive things are. So I'm, I'm ready. I think I'm okay with all of this, but if we want to take a little extra time so that we make sure, then let's do that, but let's really be quick about it.
Supervisor Horsley?
I'm just going to say, as long as it's at the end of May, I mean, I think that's fine.
We'll try to do it sooner.
Okay.
Okay. And Supervisor Pine.
Okay. So, yeah, I just want to make a couple of extra comments, too. So I do, I do think it's very prudent to look at this in the context of the general plan. You know, I would like some thought to be given to whether it would make any sense to include in the new building, and I think we have to really understand our plans for the Hall of Justice. I'm not an advocate of putting money into this building. I think this building is, you know, really, really an inadequate building, and I'm reluctant to do that. I also think we should consider, consider this in the context of the need to do the mental health pod build-outs. I'll wait until my colleagues are done talking. So I'd also like to look at this in the context of the mental health pod. For example, we do need these mental health pods, and, you know, conceivably, this facility could be a fantastic mental health facility in this Old Maguire. I know, I know all these sound like, I just question whether we've kind of given this big enough, big enough thought, that whether, you know, we've really kind of pushed it on the, all the alternatives. I am, as Supervisor Horsley said, you know, we definitely want to see the numbers, you know, we definitely need the money for Cordillares. And on the points I make about Maguire and Maple Street, I mean, everyone has to remember, you know, that, you know, I guess with this plummeting inmate population, we built a very big facility in Maple Street that has lots of programming space built in. So if it was, if it was maximally occupied, programming space wouldn't go away. I'm not talking about taking away programming space or any of all the good functions and features we put into that facility, but we're going to have a lot of unused space in that facility, and I think it's a shame. I think that that facility should be used for its intended purposes, and that we ought to use that facility to, we built that facility in part because we hoped that it would help with reducing recidivism. And, you know, now, we're not using, you know, I guess we can have a report back on how much we're using, but, you know, we built out the warm, the warm shell alone, if I'm correct, is 256 additional beds. And I'm not quite sure what's going to go on in all that space. So that's, I guess that's where I'm coming from. And when you look at demographics, you look at the aging population, you look at the gentrifying population, you look at the fact that the number of people in the youth, children in the Youth Service Center is plummeting, you know, what I'm saying is, I think, worthy of consideration. And when you make these 40 million, 50 million, 100 million dollar investments, I think you have to really take the time to take the long view. So I give all that input to the Facility Planning Committee for their consideration.
If I could respond, I appreciate your comments, Supervisor Pine. I think it's important to recall or remember that eight years ago, when we started the planning process for that facility, you know, it was never intended to be a replacement facility for Maguire.
Right, I agree.
We, there's two kinds of capacity. There's actual beds that you can put bodies in, and then there's functional capacity that allows you to do the type of programming and the type of, to run the system that the way you intend to, or the way you hope to. So, for example, in one of our pods over at Maguire, there's 96 beds, but we're only able to put 57 people in there because of the need to keep certain individuals apart, the need to protect certain individuals from others, and the kind of violent nature of many of those inmates. So while, yes, there are beds available over at Maple Street, and the ground floor won't actually be done until, you know, I think, next year, if we were to overcrowd or to full, try to fill that, that facility to its maximum capacity, then we were right back where we started eight years ago, where our ability to do the type of programming that we've embraced is limited by our...
That's an important point.
...by the need to keep all these people away from each other.
Could I just ask a clarifying question on that? Because that's a really important point. So, Maple Street, if I'm correct, tell me if I'm wrong, if it was, when it's completely built out, it would have, what, 756 or something like that, 792 beds?
I think about a little more than that if you throw in the transitional housing beds.
Right, so just, you know, just so I understand your point. So, you know, if all those beds were used, say we had a spike in crime, and we had to use them all, are you saying that that would compromise the quality of our, our work to ride programming?
Yes.
So we never intended, so how many of those beds?
If I had to house violent, you know, administratively segregated types of inmates in that facility, it would decrease my capacity because there'd be a lot of empty space because we can't put people together. They attack each other.
I understand.
So that, what it does is it lowers our capacity for both programming and housing. So we need a area of our system that we can keep people that are violent, that are predators, that are...
I understand.
...need protective custody, that are mentally ill. There's a whole variety of people that need special housing, and that facility is limited because it adopts a more open, we have multiple occupancy cells where people are housed together, and there's many people in our system that are inappropriate for that type of housing. That's, that's the point.
Right. So again, I just want to make clear to everyone that, you know, this idea I have is certainly nothing that could be done immediately or in the next year, or probably the next three years, because it could only be done if the population was sufficiently small that you could make the investments needed to handle those much more difficult inmates in the, in Maple. You would never do it unless, unless those conditions were met. And I, so certainly, nothing could be done now, but again, when you're making these, these large investments, I think you've got to take the five- and 10-year view. And, you know, who would ever have dreamed that our population, when we started talking about the new jail, we were talking about, you know, well in excess of 1,000 inmates. So, I mean, so the world has changed, so that, so I'm, you know, I don't want to leave the suggestion that I think we should do anything in the, you know, anywhere in the near term. I'm just saying there, it's not inconceivable to me, because of the factors I've cited, that the day will come that you could make additional investments in Maple and be able to accommodate all, everyone. That day is not here, and I don't know when it will come, but I think it will come someday.
Well, I wish I shared your optimism. I actually think that we're going to go the other direction, and we're going to need all the beds that we have, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Tissier?
Just two quick things. I'm kind of seeing from sort of the opposite side as well, because we're keeping the state inmates now, so we have a more serious offenders, which makes it something we never thought we'd have to deal with either. So we're dealing with that side, which may not have as many inmates, but the ones we have are pretty serious. But the comment I want to make, one of the other things that we approved earlier today was that we are going to be putting two mental health pods in Maguire. So we are utilizing some of those extra beds for purposes that we can't do in other places. So, you know, it's, it's not like these things aren't being looked at. I just, we didn't bring that out, it was on consent, but it's something that's, I think, very near and dear that we need to be doing, and we're doing it, and it hadn't been called out. So that's also an additional thing that's being done by the sheriff's department in conjunction with correctional health.
Right. We're very excited about the partnership with... Right, we're very excited about the partnership with Louise Rogers and her staff to create that space.
Supervisor Horstley? I just make one, one quick comment, as somebody who's spent a few years running the jails, you probably do need to have population, to be really effective, probably it's best that your population be about eighty percent of capacity, because you do have, as the sheriff has correctly said, is that you have special needs people, and you can't, you really can't utilize all yours. It would be nice if you could, but if everybody was the same, you could, but they're not. And there's wide variations, you know, and, you know, there's kind of a rise of gangs, which actually didn't, wasn't as prevalent in my time as it is today, but, you know, you have different, it's a classification system, different sophistication, you don't want to put a drunk driver in with a murderer, so you do need to have some flexibility. So, being at a hundred percent capacity makes jail operations very challenging, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
And the other thing about the old, or the new, the other part of the Maguire, was mostly single cells, which we doubled, we were required by the state to have single cells, and one of the things that we found was that we had a lot of suicides, and that's one of the, we double-celled it because we knew we were gonna be overcrowded, but we double-celled it also because people don't, fortunately, don't commit suicide in front of another person. So, it really, we have not had problems with suicides, but it was, it's a different jail, basically. It's, it is meant to house people in single cells, but we actually double cells, which actually was, that's enough, we'll say anymore.
And, and the one other unknown for the future that, that I think we all have to keep in mind is, the state continues to have a prison overcrowding problem, we know their last solution to that problem, so there's no reason to expect that we may not see more state prisoners in the future rather than less.
Thank you. Any other comments, Supervisor Groom, anybody? No? Let me just try to summarize then. It sounds like we're gonna come back in thirty days, or thereabouts, and by the end of May. And it also seems like that perhaps, for some of the questions that came up, we need to step up the activity on the Master Plan Subcommittee's work, and maybe Mr. Callagie could get us together a couple more times before the end of May, so that we make sure we're all on the same page with all these moving parts. And in terms of how we're gonna pay for all this, I think that's a, you've answered that question, and you'll come back, and that's on, yeah. Okay, so with that, I'm not sure, do we need a motion to?
No.
Yeah, I think we have your direction.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Item number six, a resolution authorizing the President of the Board to enter into a, an agreement with the Airport Commission of the City and County of San Francisco relating to the reimbursement of services and sharing of the hotel transient occupancy tax.
Mr. President, members of the Board, there are really two parts of this item. One part is the hotel transient occupancy tax. As the Board's aware, the airport intends to build a new hotel at the airport to replace the Hilton, which had been there for many years. The hotel operator will be the Hyatt facilities, and it will be a four-star hotel. It will be owned by the airport, on the airport site, but operated by, by Hyatt. Because of the unique funding of the, of airport operations, the airport approached us early on and asked if we would consider some abatement of TOT, which has been commonly done in hotel projects throughout the area in recent years, in order to help move this project forward. And we said that we would engage in those discussions. Those discussions resulted in the proposal today to provide a five-year abatement of one-half the TOT, or a maximum of eight million dollars, provided that the county does not have to remit any jet fuel tax to the airport. In that case, then all bets are off. The second issue that is part of this MOU is an issue that Supervisor Tissier raised a number of years ago, and that is, frankly, could we get the airport to be part of the EOC JPA? And there are various reasons why the airport can't do that, relating again to airport financing. But what they have agreed to do is to provide reimbursement for some of the emergency calls that, that is, are responded to by county forces that take place on the airport, and that would be approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, which would go to the EO, the Emergency Operating JPA, under the terms of this agreement. We think this is a good agreement, we think that we will realize at least eight million dollars over the next five years, or the five years from when the airport opens, which I believe about nineteen nineteen. And we would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yes. If we propose an impact fee on hotels, would we be able to collect that hotel tax from the airport?
That's the question County Council would have to, to answer. You know, that, that really gets into the very complicated nature of the relationship between the county and the airport, because the airport is a publicly-owned facility, and our ability to impose those taxes on another public agency would be a legal question.
Well, it's not a tax, it's a fee. It's an impact fee, is because there's an impact on, on essentially housing, and if we had a similar kind of relationship where they shared in the impact fee, would they be amenable?
The hotel would be probably home.
First of all, I want to know if we could do it, and second of all-
That's something we probably have to, have to take a look at, frankly.
Okay, could you get back to me on that?
I can, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, Supervisor Tissier?
A quick comment, and I think John pretty much spelled it out. You know, the Emergency Services Council had wanted the airport to be in partnership with us, as it turns out, with FAA rules and all of that didn't seem to work, at least their legal group didn't think it could work. But I do appreciate the fact they came back and came up with a way, because we do send a lot of people out on calls, we get a lot of calls for the airport, and we weren't getting any kind of reimbursement. So, this really, actually, this is probably more than they would have paid as dues as a member, too. So, I think we really came out ahead of the game, and I think the cities will appreciate the fact that, you know, that just puts a few more dollars in the pot for the different needs we have with the Emergency Services Council. So, it turned out to be a really good solution, I think.
You know, when they say that they can't take any airport resources out of the airport, I, I think that's actually not true, well, not true. I imagine, if there were a major earthquake in the city and county of San Francisco, do we really think that they wouldn't take SFPD out? They also have equipment that they can, it's from United Airlines, they can actually lift up an overpass, so, because it's, it's equipment that essentially is meant for a plane, but it can actually lift up an overpass.
Through the President, Supervisor Horstley, I, I share your frustration that the, the rules regarding what can be spent off-airport and on-airport are fairly vague, and always subject to the interpretation of the airport. So, it's been a matter of frustration for all of us for, for many years, what can be and can't be done, but in this particular case, the airport has made that determination, and this is the best workaround that we could get.
I, no, I commend the work that you did on it, so I just want to point out that they, they make the rules, and they actually sometimes do other things with that, that are not part of the rules.
Yeah, if I could just clarify one thing, Mr. Malpigh indicated that with jet fuel sales tax from Measure A, you know, so all bets are off, but, but I think what he means by that is that, you know, there's a, and this is in the board memo, and I'm sure you all read it, we reduce, it's sort of an offset, so for every dollar we spend in jet fuel stacks from Measure A at the airport, we reduce the TOT contribution dollar for dollar.
Yeah.
So, think of it as an offset.
Supervisor Pine? I think the hotel is a really exciting project, and I think it will be highly utilized by travelers who today aren't gonna, you know, it's, be able to stay right at the airport will be a great convenience for people, and I think it's gonna be a big success. And I do commend the County Manager for working out the, these arrangements. So, I'd be happy to move approval.
Before we do that, one of the, like, we were recently, and as, in, at the Hyatt in Monterey, at the Progress Seminar, and they have little, all kinds of different fees, could we impose a fee, a room tax fee that's on the, it's just curiosity.
I'd say get it built first.
Okay.
You're putting the carp before the horse.
Supervisor Groom?
A couple of years ago, Supervisor Tissier and I had a conversation with John Martin, and how he described the hotel at that time was, he has a number of eastern travelers, Asian travelers, who want to come to the airport, stay right in the hotel for maybe twenty-four, forty-eight hours, do their business, and go right home. So, I'm sure it will, they did a lot of market research, and a lot of customer surveying before they made the determination to build this hotel. So, I think it will be a great success, and it will be a boon to us financially.
Thank you.
Supervisor, your motion?
Okay, there's been a motion, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number seven is a Measure A, it's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Peninsula Family Services for enhancement of its infant and toddler programs at the Mission and Midway Early Learning Center in Daly City.
Mr. President, members of the Board, this item is being brought forth by District Five Supervisor Tissier, from the Measure A funds that are allotted on a district basis. As you indicated, this particular measure would provide funds for the infant and toddler programs at Mission and Midway Early Learning Centers in Daly City for a term of one years, one year, and not to exceed two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Supervisor Tissier may want to add additional comments.
Yes, thank you, and I also thanks to Raina, she helped put this together for my office. The real concept behind this is, you know, we have the big lift for those that are, you know, and are toddlers and older and in school, but this is really trying to bring the big lift concept to the zero-to-three population, to kind of get them geared up early on. You've seen a lot of advertisement on the radio and TV lately about reading to children and, you know, talking to children, singing to children, all that. This is bringing that concept into two learning centers in Daly City that really could use some additional help for those children. So, we've done a not to exceed past June of 2017, that this would be sort of their pilot, so to speak, and, and a not to exceed of two forty, two hundred and forty-five thousand. So, I would ask that my colleagues approve this, and I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion passes, item number eight, County Manager's Report Number Seven for 2016.
Mr. President, members of the Board, several items in my report this morning. The first is an indication that we are about ready to proceed with the new dispatch EOC center. The working name is now the San Mateo County Regional Operations Center, or ROC, which is fairly descriptive of the nature of construction of the building, but we'll actually bring a name to the Board for official naming at a later date. But we will be beginning initial demolition, demolition in about a week's period of time, so we will keep you apprised as we move forward in that project, and of course, have an official groundbreaking ceremony later on. In terms of health and human services, we are now in the third open enrollment period for the Affordable Care Act, and the, the county's team continues to do a remarkable job in signing up people for the Affordable Care Act. In the enrollment period that just ended, approximately two hundred and, sorry, approximately sixty-three thousand people have been enrolled in the program, and through the outreach efforts in East Palo Alto, Redwood City, and North Fair Oaks, there are some sites that actually, especially at the schools, which is particularly gratifying, the enrollment is a hundred percent. It means a hundred percent of the folks in those areas are gonna have health care in the future.
Right.
That's, that's tremendous. Finally, in terms of community services, I'd like to note that Sarah Berklin will join the Parks Department as the new Assistant Parks Director. She is presently an attorney with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and well-versed in a wide variety of biologic and parks and environmental issues, and I'm sure you will enjoy the opportunity of working with her. The Arts Commission has made a number of grants, particularly to educators and schools in the past few months, and our library is in the shortlist of the National Institute of Museum and Library Services, and we're awaiting the word whether we will be one of the final recipients of the National Medal for Museum and Library Service Award, so really, congratulations to our library system. Note that our Information Services Department will begin working with several cities to really reactivate the old fiber optic network that for a variety of reasons was never used, but is still perfectly functional, to really transfer in very cost-effective manner, big data, whether it's in emergencies or for other purposes, and I think that's a very exciting prospect. And finally, to note that I will be appointing Mr. Mike Callagie as the new Assistant County Manager.
Oh, very good.
You want to say a few words, Michael? No, we can't right now. Sorry.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Can we move on to item number nine?
We can.
The groundwater basin assessment in the San Mateo Plain SubBasin.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the Board, Mr. Malpigh, Mr. Byers, my name is Jim Agamire, and I am the Director with the Office of Sustainability, and I just have a few brief words, but also joining me here tonight, today at the podium is Heather Forshee from the Environmental Health, she's a Director there. And before we get started, I want to acknowledge, this is a collaborative effort between two offices for this particular agreement that we're asking your approval on, and I'd like to recognize also the work of Charles Ice from Environmental Health, as well as Kirsten Pringle from the Office of Sustainability, which makes up our team of four for this particular project. So, to give you a little bit of background, and then I'm gonna pass the baton here to Heather for closure on this particular item, but we initiated these efforts under the Measure A application back at the end of 2014. We had this idea about groundwater sustainability in San Mateo County, and the necessary steps to address this. And in turn, we made a proposal for the Measure A, and in turn, the monies were appropriated to the Office of Sustainability. And from that, we were able to identify a scope of work, and then reviewed that with our peers, vetted it, and were able to revise that before issuing the request for proposals. And we've finally been able to get this contract before you today, and I'm gonna let Heather address some of the specifics.
Morning, President Slocum, members of the Board, Mr. Byers, Heather Forshee, Director of Environmental Health. In front of you today is an agreement for a contract amount of six hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars for groundwater assessment for groundwater basin in the eastern portion of San Mateo County. The southern border would be the border with Santa Clara County, the northern border, city of Burlingame, to the east would be San Francisco Bay, and roughly to the west, I-280. The contract we are recommending is for work with Erler Kowalowski, Inc., and their subcontractors, Todd Groundwater and Hydro Focus, to assess the groundwater basin described before you. This assessment would evaluate groundwater conditions in this area, including groundwater storage capacity and the current usage of, of this resource. The assessment will determine if and how this resource could provide substantial or sustainable groundwater sources for our residents here in San Mateo County. It will evaluate potential impacts of sea level rise, climate change, saltwater intrusion, and increased groundwater pumping of our resource here. It'll assess whether this basin is suitable for large-scale recharge, groundwater recharge, water banking currently being practiced to the north and to the south of this basin. And the assessment will compile groundwater management strategies, informal and formal, that stakeholders could use to determine what the best way of managing this resource would be. And collectively, this information will be critical for stakeholders, including the county, the cities, WADA districts, and sanitary districts, as they determine the best way to manage this increasingly valuable resource. And with that, we've got, we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Supervisor Pine?
Just a comment, I, I just want to, you know, say that I very much appreciate your work on this topic. Supervisor Tissier is well, is well aware, there's the, there's the basin in the north county, the West Side District Basin, and then there's the basin down in Santa Clara, you know, both of which are heavily utilized and, and managed. And then in between-
And then in between, we have this San Mateo basin, which has really not been heavily utilized and is not well-understood. But in the last year or so, there's been a lot of initiatives undertaken, and there are more plans to start to tap this basin. So EPA has enhanced its wells. I believe Menlo Park is looking at doing that. I believe Cal Water up in city of San Mateo is interested. So all of a sudden, there's potentially a lot of pressure that could emerge with vis-a-vis this basin. And in order to kind of think through how to manage that, and whether we need a formal groundwater management plan, as the state is encouraging in many places, you know, we need this data. We need to understand what this basin is all about. So I think this will be, you know, a key foundation for looking at these issues of how people are utilizing this basin and whether it needs to be coordinated in some way.
Thank you. Other comments?
I just have a question about, you know, if others are using this basin, like Cal Water, are they participating or paying part of the cost of this, or?
No, as part of the assessment, we are looking at ways of bringing in other water agencies that may be interested in doing work with us on this and creating more information than we would otherwise get. So no, they're not contributing to the cost of this contract, but we're hoping to leverage it to get even more information.
And I did notice that one of the basins that we do responsible for is CSA 11, and Todd is one of the subcontractors, and they have done work on our CSA 11 basin. So in case, I probably will be seeing, looking if we could, because we, that is, that whole Pescador area is really dependent upon that CSA 11 basin. So it's going to be an interesting project to kind of watch how this is managed and what they come up with.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Board member reports. Supervisor Pine, do you want to begin?
I do have one adjourned in memory, a very sad situation. My friend and former school board member in Burlingame, Linda Lee Stwire, lost her son, Michael, or her stepson, Michael, who, only a 25-year-old, college San Mateo graduate, Redwood City-born. And, you know, you hear about these tragedies on the coast, and this is one of them. He was walking along the edge of the surf, and he was swept to sea. And so our heart and thoughts go out to Linda and her husband and her family.
Thank you. Supervisor Tissier?
Yes, I have a few things. I have two adjourned memories. The first one is Jane Wired. She was a former employee of the city of Daly City. She passed away on Easter Sunday. She and her husband had lived in Daly City for the last 57 years. She was married to her husband Ellis for 55 years. She raised four children there, Susan, Steve, Jill, and Polly. She leaves behind nine grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. So she will be sorely missed by the community of Daly City. And the second was James Cronin. He was a San Francisco native and 34-year resident of Hillsborough. He succumbed to cancer on March 18th. He was a graduate of Saint Stevens Catholic School and Saint Ignatius High School. He also attended Santa Clara University, where he got his Bachelor's of Science and Master's of Business Administration degrees. He was an Army veteran, First Lieutenant. He is survived by his wife of 25 years, Nancy, his three sons, Stephen, Brendan, and Michael, and two grandchildren. He operated, owned and operated Norbert Cronin and Company. It was an insurance brokerage in San Francisco. It was one of only 2% of insurance professionals nationwide to hold both a CLU and a CPCU designation. He was highly respected and universally recognized as an expert in his profession. He was a lifelong philanthropist. He was generous with his time and talent. He was loyal, honorable, and compassionate. He was a lifelong athlete. He waterski'd, cycled, played competitive basketball into his final year of life. He was also noted for his love of boating and circular pastries. He was fondly referred to as Captain Donut. And I did not know him personally, but I knew his wife is one of the ombudsmen for us here in San Mateo County. And our condolences go out to their family. I have a couple other just announcements for those of you that always like to hear about these. The upcoming Age Well Drive Smart Seminars, South San Francisco, Thursday, April 28th, at the Magnolia Senior Center.
Yep.
I'm not really looking at all you guys, really.
Yep.
In Belmont, Thursday, May 19th, at Twin Pines Senior Center. In Pacifica, Thursday, June 23rd, at Pacificus, Belmont was Twin Pines, and Pacifica, Pacifica Senior Center. San Carlos, Tuesday, August 23rd, at the Adult Community Center. Foster City, September 29th, at the Foster City Recreation Center. Also, our 12th Annual San Mateo County Disaster Prepartness Day will be Saturday, June 11th. It's the 12th annual, and it will take place from 10:00 to 2:00. Anyone arriving at the event center before 11:00 a.m. that day will have free parking and free admission to the county fair as well. And my last one is the Seniors on the Move Conference for this year. It's the 29th year. The date has been set for Tuesday, October 25th, at the San Mateo County Event Center. Registration information, including website to register and other details, will be officially set up and released in October. I'm going to guess it'll be soon in October, but anyone can contact my office or the Office of Congresswoman Jackie Speer for more details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just last week, we... A number of us attended the Progress Seminar, and it was the co-chair was the great Carol Groom. The great, I actually did a really nice, it was really, I think, one of the best Progress Seminars that I've attended, and I've attended a number of them. But the ones, John Malby was one of the facilitators at, he was a declining middle class, and then there was another one on traffic, and that was great. And then there was a Stanford University professor talked about poverty and causes of poverty. And I was thinking of the, some of the things that we do and the things that Adrian just proposed for early childhood education, that actually, he talked about upstream versus downstream. You have to go through the whole thing. Basically, the upstream is taking care of the people at the front end so that they don't end up in poverty in the back end. So I think things that, a number of things that the county is doing under the leadership of both Supervisor Tissier and Supervisor Groom are really those upstream kinds of things. So congratulations.
Supervisor Groom?
I have an adjourned in memory for Lee Bailey, longtime San Mateo County resident. He was a California Certified CPA specializing in forensic accounting, and he was a partner at the old Hemming Morse Firm. And as sort of as dull as that sounds for a profession, his real love in life was history. And he was like a 30-year member of the San Mateo County Historical Association for the majority of those years, as often falls to CPAs. He was the treasurer. Kept the books balanced, make sure that nobody overspent too much. But his personality and his love of history, he just sparkled when he talked about history and talked about what was happening at the San Mateo County Historical Association for all of those years. And he died way too young. He was born in 1943, and he had many more years to give.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. First, I don't know if you've all had a chance to see the new, I'm not sure what you call it, but Shadow Box at the State Capitol. I'm assuming you all got a photograph of that. Oh, it's up here. Oh, very nice. Thank you. You can see the old Shadow Box on the left there, and EGOT's, and the one on the right, which in the center there, as I understand it, is a nine-minute video that loops through and tells the story of San Mateo County. It's quite a big improvement. And also, for those of us that are techies, there's a QR code on the bottom right that you can put your cell phone on, and it'll bring you up to the county website. Thank you for doing that. And I know there were a large number of county staff that worked on this and actually designed it and made it all happen, and I'm very thankful, and I know the board is very thankful for all of their work on that. Did you want to add something?
Just to thank Michelle Duran for all of her work in organizing and keeping that moving.
Yes, very, a big, big improvement, I think you'll all agree. And then I wanted to also, if you've not had a chance to look at the Measure A portal yet, and there's a picture of that, how about that, a screenshot? The Measure A portal is really an amazing part of our web presence, and thanks to the communications team and the team at ISD, this site really tells the story of how our Measure A dollars are working, as Supervisor Horsley said, on the front end of things, to make a difference in this community of San Mateo County. And, you know, if you go through, I looked at a few of these, the California Clubhouse, for instance, and it really tells the personal story of the clients in the clubhouse and puts a face on those dollars and that investment. So a big shout-out to everybody, Marshall Wilson and Michelle and the communication team that had a hand at this. This is really, I think, an awesome story. Hopefully, a lot of people visit this and read about what we've been doing. I don't know what you've done with Mr. Callagie. He was here, and then you...
He's working off the Civic Center.
You pointed to the door, and he left.
Good job.
I don't know if that was a function of his new job or exactly what, but, yeah, we should, I don't know if he's available for a few comments, but I've had the opportunity, as I know we all have, to work with Mike since he came on board, and I just have to say that I really enjoy working with him and have worked with him very closely in North Fair Oaks. And he's a problem solver. He knows how to get people together around a table in a collaborative and cooperative way. And there was a flooding issue that I'm reminded of in North Fair Oaks where it really didn't look like anything could be done, and by golly, Mike went out there on a Saturday and met with all the neighbors, and they were angry, and he, through a series of meetings, got them to understand the situation. Public Works came in and made some improvements that Mr. Callagie had suggested, and in the end, those neighbors fell in love with San Mateo County and especially Mr. Callagie. So congratulations to Michael.
President Slocum, might I add that he is a Foster City resident, and he is a longtime city of San Mateo police officer and employee, so District Two always brings the best.
That's right. Thank you. So we're fortunate to have Mr. Callagie and his leadership, and we all congratulate him, and thank you for sharing that news, Mr. Malby. And finally, I just wanted to echo what Supervisor Horsley had said about the Progress Seminar. You know, Carol Groom's leadership on that, along with Roseanne, and Roseanne Faust and Coven Mullen, they just put together a superb, I thought, Progress Seminar. I thought the seminars were really timely and well-done. There was lots of lively exchanges. The food was good, the speeches by the Stanford professor, and I thought Congresswoman... The board president? And the board president, of course. Yeah. I must confess, I did tell a little, well, I'm not going to go there.
You told a big fib.
Yeah.
Said that he beat me in golf.
Yeah. I really didn't. So I'm confessing right now. And then, of course, to our thanks to Congresswoman Anna Esche, who I really enjoyed that conversation at the lunch. So Supervisor Groom, job well done. Thank you for getting us there.
Well, thank you, and we must salute the Redwood City Chamber staff as well. They really work hard.
Yep, thank you. With that, we have no closed session today, and so we are adjourned, or we'll reconvene at the employee awards ceremony.